Good evening, everybody, and welcome to City Hall. I'm calling to order the Planning Commission meeting for the City of San Clemente for Wednesday, May 21, 2025. And we are convened at the City Hall and the Council chambers. Commissioner Davis, would you do the honors of leading us in the pledge tonight? Thank you, sir.
Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. All right, we do have a quorum. We have four commissioners present: Commissioner Davis, Commissioner Crandall, Commissioner McCann, and myself. So we're just going along on the agenda. And we have nothing for item four. Item five on the agenda is the review and approval of our minutes from our meeting in April 2nd. That's a while back. Does anybody have any comments on the minutes?
I have no changes.
Okay.
So I'll move the...
We have three. Is that going to work? That shouldn't be... That should be okay, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So Commissioner Crandall, you're in the middle of a... You're going to abstain, right? You were not there.
I wasn't there.
Yeah.
Just, you're not prohibited from voting.
If you reviewed...
If you have reviewed them.
Okay. So Commissioner Crandall, are you going to make a motion to approve the minutes?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we have a motion to approve the minutes from Commissioner Crandall, seconded by Commissioner McCann. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And then one abstention, right? Okay. So the minutes are approved? Great. Item six is the Oral Communications Section of the Planning Commission Agenda, which is just there in the event that any member of the audience wants to address the Planning Commission on a non-agenda item. So I'll give you guys a minute to see if there's anyone who wants to come forward under that. Okay, seen no one under item six. Item seven is Consent Calendar. We don't have any Consent Calendar items tonight. So that takes us to item eight, our public hearings. So we have two public hearings. And this is how we run the public hearings, just for those that don't know. Once I open the public hearing, everything that we do, that is the record of the hearing. And we're going to first start with the professional city staff providing their report. Then the applicant will have 10 minutes to make a presentation. Then the public will be invited to make comments. The public has three minutes, a person, maximum. You don't have to take the full three minutes, but you have three minutes to make comments. In order to do that, what we request of the audience is to, in the back, fill out a blue speaker card and hand it to our commission clerk, and we'll call your name, and then you'll have three minutes. So after that, we ask the applicant to come back up and see if they have any additional comments, maybe any responses to what they heard from the public. And then we'll close the public hearing, and we'll have our discussions and then make motions, and that'll be the decisions. Motions are the decisions. So that's it. And we're going to start with our first public hearing tonight, which is item 8A. And this is for Project 25-088. It's Sprouts Farmers Market, which is located at 55 Camino de Estrella, in that shopping center there. And it's for a request of the Planning Commission to consider approving a conditional use permit to allow the sales of full alcohol for off-site consumption. And also for us to make a determination that it is exempt from the Californian Environmental Quality Act. So with that introduction, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. So now, open the public hearing. And before I recognize Mr. Hanley, who's going to do the staff report, I just want to do a little housekeeping and just ask my colleagues if there's been any disclosures they need to make or ex parte communications on this agenda item.
None.
None? None? Okay, fantastic. Okay, Brandon Hanley, you are the staff providing the report tonight. Welcome. I'll give you the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Cosgrove. Just restating, the staff report is presenting Sprouts Farmers Market's requests for a conditional use permit to allow full-service alcohol for off-site consumption. 550 Camino de Estrella is a shopping center on the city limit bordered by Camino Miracosta, Camino de Estrella, and the southbound entrance to the 5. This application proposes no changes to the site itself. The center was remodeled in 2014 when Sprouts first opened. Prior to this, it was a Sears Essentials. Sprouts is located in the Community Commercial 2 Zone. Commercial zones are designed for grocery and alcohol sales. The general plan's vision allows for a variety of retail uses in commercial zones, including grocery stores, which are permitted by right, and has adequate parking facilities for this primary use. Sprouts Farmers Market is requesting a conditional use permit to sell ready-to-drink spirits. This requires a type 21 license from the Alcohol and Beverage Control Board. This is an existing grocery store that already offers a small selection of beer and wine. The hours of sale will be 7 to 10, the existing hours of operation for the store. Shown on this screen is an enlarged image that shows the sales floor that's currently dedicated to selling alcohol. This represents only 2% of the grocery store's sales floor. The additional product is going to be incorporated in this existing area, and there will be no change to the layout of the sales floor. The planning team does not anticipate offering additional products will increase the intensity of use to the point where the existing parking facilities will no longer be adequate. The proposed hours of operation are not changing from the original hours of operation of a grocery store and are in character with other businesses that sell alcohol in this area. The planning team does not anticipate any additional demand for parking or increased traffic at this location that could negatively impact the surrounding businesses and community. There have been no code cases related to alcohol and safety for the current operation of this business. There have been five code cases in total since Sprouts opened. All of these cases are now closed. There has been no complaints lodged since 2021. After checking with the police and the ABC, they have no comments regarding this business securing their type 21 license pending this use permit. In addition to a use permit, the ABC requires a finding of public convenience or necessity to sell alcohol at this establishment, which the city planner has the discretion to approve. DMT reviewed this project in March and issued the standard conditions of approval for CUPs. There are no public comments related to this project at this time. For this reason, this proposal meets the findings required for a conditional use permit. The proposed use is permitted pursuant to the approval of a conditional use permit within the subject zone and complies with all the applicable provisions of the San Clemente Municipal Code, the San Clemente General Plan, and the purpose and intent of the zone. The primary use is not changing, and the parking demand will not increase. Therefore, the existing site is suitable for the proposed use. Due to its limited scope, consistency with the primary use, and lack of prior issues and comments from safety entities, the proposed use will not be detrimental to the public or negatively impact surrounding land uses. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission determine the project is categorically exempt from the requirements of SEQA pursuant to Section 15301 and adopt the resolution approving conditional use permit 25193. Sprouts Farmers Market full alcohol sales subject to the attached conditions of approval.
Does that conclude your presentation?
Yes, that concludes our presentation.
All right, that's great. Thank you, and we appreciate your written report as well. Before we bring up the applicant, does any of the members have a question for Brendan? Okay. So is the applicant for this application present?
I am.
Great. If you could introduce yourself, and then you've got 10 minutes to make your presentation.
Okay. My name is Teri Dikaroff. I represent Sprouts Farmers Market. Thank you for having me tonight, commissioners. I don't have a presentation, per se. I do want to say, though, that Sprouts has chosen select stores in the state of California to try to roll out this program of trying some of the... To transition from a type 20 to a type 21. So I really appreciate that San Clemente has allowed us this opportunity, and I think staff, for everything they've done to help me get here tonight. So thank you for that. Does anyone have any questions about the type of offerings that we will have under type 21? I can answer any of those or any other questions about Sprouts. It's been a very successful store in San Clemente, so I'm really excited to see what will happen with, you know, having a few additional offerings on the shelves.
Do any of the members have questions for the applicant? No. Guess not. I guess it's pretty straightforward. I think the report speaks for itself, and yeah, Sprouts is quite popular in town.
Yes, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
All right, we'll keep you on standby in the event some... We do have a question, though.
Excellent.
Thanks for making the drive down here. I understand you came from quite a distance.
Thank you, yeah. It wasn't bad.
Okay, well, fair enough. Thank you again. Do we have any member of the public that wants to speak on this application? I think all the speaker cards I have are for the next item. But I'll just turn to the audience to make sure. Does anyone in the audience want to speak to this item? Okay, seen none. I am going to close the public hearing. Public hearing now closed. I'm going to turn to my colleagues for discussion and/or a motion. We have staff recommendations if anybody wants to make a motion or propose something
I don't have any discussion on this item. I'm in support, and I'd be happy to make a motion that we...
Yeah, please do.
I move that we approve the staff recommendations determining that the project is categorically exempt from SEQA and also adopting Resolution PC 25-008 and CUP 25-193.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor from Commissioner McCann. Anyone... And seconded from...
Seconded, yes.
Great. So it's seconded by Commissioner Davis. Any discussion about the motion on the floor? None? All right, I'll... All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Passes unanimous? Congratulations, you have your conditional use permit pending a 10-day appeal period.
Okay.
All right, then it'll be available to you at City Hall. The next item is a public hearing for Project 24-537, known as the Bowl. And this is located at 641 Camino de Los Maris. It's... Most people are familiar with it as the old Coquardian movie theater. And this is a request to the Planning Commission to consider a family bowling and amusement center at the commercial property site previously known as the Coquardian Theater. The bowling center will feature 18 bowling lanes, arcade games, multi-sport simulators, projection dart stations, a chef-inspired full restaurant and bar, private VIP and birthday party areas, and an exclusive speakeasy bar. So tonight, what we are looking at are a minor conditional use permit, that's 24-033, as well as a conditional use permit, 25-032. And to present the staff report, I will recognize in just as soon as I open the public hearing, and which I'll do now, indeed, the public hearing now open. Do we have any disclosures or ex parte communications from members on this item?
I have visited the site numerous times, so... And the theater when it was open.
I have as well.
Okay, very good. I think, you know, I think we all have been to that shopping center. It's quite popular. So David Carrillo is the associate planner who has prepared this tonight's staff report and is going to do the presentation. Welcome, David. Nice to see you again.
Likewise, thank you.
Got the floor.
Thank you, Chair members of the Commission. Good evening. So the project's location is at 641 Camino de Los Maris, Suite B. As mentioned, it would be occupying where the Coquardian Theater last operated. Zoning for this property is similar to the previous Project Community Commercial 2... I'm sorry, 4. And just wanted to highlight the property boundaries are in the aqua blue here on the Some background on the... What's known as the Theater Plaza, in 1995, the City Council approved this plaza to include uses such as retail, food, and the theater that housed 1,260 seats. In that approval, the City Council did approve a mitigated negative declaration, which also was supported by a traffic and parking study for the plaza. With that approval came a condition of approval that required the applicant to enter into shared parking agreements with adjacent properties in order to satisfy parking requirements due to the high parking demand from the theater at the time. And fast-forwarding to 2017, that's when the Coquardian Theater closed. So going more into the parking study that was done at the time of the original entitlement, this is in 1995. Within the parking study, there were two methods that were acknowledged on how to approach parking and the analysis. The one method was to look at the uses as standalone uses and require parking per the parking ratios in the code. So that would be known as a strict application of parking requirements. And the second method was a shared parking method, where there's an understanding that the peak demand for uses vary throughout the day. So that parking study supported the second method, which is shared parking, and again resulted in shared parking agreements that were executed and recorded in 1996. There were assumptions made for daytime and nighttime uses or parking demand. And that entire shared parking arrangement provided a parking supply of 362 spaces, which included the subject property and the two adjacent lots. And in conclusion, the parking study found that the parking requirements with the shared parking arrangement satisfied or satisfied. And that was including all three properties, not just the Theater Plaza. There's a note there at the bottom that I do want to add here that this project that we're reviewing tonight does include a condition of approval that requires the applicant to provide estoppel certificates to confirm that the shared parking agreements are still in effect. And I'll touch on that more later in the presentation. And I'll touch on that more later in the presentation. So here's an aerial view of the subject lot, 641, and the adjacent properties, 635 and 647, where that included the shared parking agreements. So as mentioned, the proposed project is a family bowling and amusement center with full alcohol onsite sales. In more detail, they're proposing 18 bowling lanes, 43 arcade games, multi-sport simulators, projection dart stations, a full restaurant and bar, a speakeasy bar, and special event areas. And I'll reiterate as well, the required permits for this project are two. We have a minor conditional use permit for the bowling alley, which is a primary use, and a conditional use permit for onsite hard alcohol sales that will be in conjunction with the restaurant. And also for the amusement center, closer than 200 feet from the boundary of the nearest residential low zone. So the proposed alcohol is all indoors. There aren't any outdoor areas available, nor is the applicant seeking to provide outdoor. Service hours are from 11:00 a.m. to 11:30 p.m., and that is addressing a condition of approval as well. We did contact ABC, and they will require a type 47 license. Also noted and outlined in any condition of approval. We are requiring employee training for responsible service and management of alcoholic beverages. And this is an important aspect of the project or condition given that children are expected to be within the suite. And there's also a condition of approval that requires that alcohol service be done in conjunction with food service as well. And we did have the Orange County Sheriff's Department and Code of Compliance review the, this part of the project and the project overall, and they are supportive with conditions. In terms of noise, the applicant is proposing indoor live entertainment with amplified sound. This would be within the speakeasy bar on the mezzanine level, the second level corner. And the staff report notes the hours for live entertainment and amplified sound as Thursday through Saturday, and holidays from 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., and that's repeated in condition 7.11. We also have to further mitigate potential noise impacts outside of the suite. There is a requirement that exterior windows and doors remain closed when live entertainment and amplified sound is being provided. The applicant is requesting a modification to condition of approval 7.11 to extend the hours that are currently noted in the staff report. And the modifications are listed on the screen. It'll be from 5:00 p.m. to 11:30 p.m. on Thursday through Saturday and holidays, and 5:00 p.m. to 10:30 p.m. Sunday through Wednesday. Staff is supportive of this request. So moving on to the amusement center, again, the part of the request here is a conditional use permit for this part of the project. So we did review this location, which is at the far front west corner of the suite. When we say amusement center, we are including the 43 arcade games and the other social games that have been previously identified. And these are deemed accessory to the bowling alley. So within the zoning ordinance, there are minimum standards for amusement centers, and this is called out in condition of approval 7.16 that the applicant remain and continue to propose a project that is consistent with those standards. Those standards include adult supervision, bicycle racks, adequate lighting. We added a condition of approval that requires an indoor lighting plan to be approved by the city planner. But also, the minimum standards also call for onsite restrooms and a public telephone. And I'll confirm right now that the project as proposed is consistent with these standards. When it comes to hours for amusement center, the city has the ability to establish the hours when it's in conjunction with another use, in this case, the bowling alley. So in considering the bowling alley hours of operation, staff is supportive of having the amusement center hours as listed here on the screen. And we do cover that as a condition of approval as well. We did analyze traffic. We worked closely with the traffic, the city traffic engineer. Given the time from when the initial traffic study was prepared for the Theater Plaza, specifically for the theater and the traffic it was creating, the city traffic engineer deemed it necessary to ask for a traffic study addendum. And in that process, we did conclude that the significant, there will be a significant reduction in peak hour vehicle trips when compared to the theater use. And we have that traffic study addendum provided as an attachment in the staff report. I'll also note here that it is a highlight to see that the occupancy is at 1,134 for the bowling alley, when, again, compared to the theater, they had approval for 1,260 theater seats. I believe the project architect is here to dive more into why that, the occupancy number is 1,134. As far as parking, the required amount is 122 for the project and versus the 315 spaces for the theater. So this is just to highlight the conclusion from the traffic study that the vehicle trips would be less when compared to the theater. So one large component of this project was the parking analysis. And I'm breaking it down into two sections. The first one is looking at the required parking for the bowl alone. And then the second part would be looking at required parking for the entire plaza, including the bowl as well and adjacent properties. So here's a quick breakdown. The required parking for the bowling alley is 122. There is a section in the staff report that explains the decision on the parking ratio for the amusement center, since the zoning code does not provide a parking ratio for this type of use. But we did look at other cities and what they require, and it's at one parking space per 150 square feet. And we also deemed it similar in nature to what a health and fitness use is. And our code calls out a parking ratio for the health and fitness club at one per 150 square feet. And for the other two uses on the far left, the bowling and the restaurant, we already have parking ratios in the code. Okay, so there are four scenarios that I'm going to show here to help explain and understand the parking situation here. So scenario one here is including all three properties that we see on the screen here, that's 635, 641, and 647. This is what's proposed from the applicant. And we see here that, I'm sorry, I'm going to pause here. So there were, the assumptions that were done in the parking study are also applied during this analysis. Let me read those assumptions from the 1995 parking study. So the assumptions are that 100% of offices are open during the day and close in the evening. 100% of restaurants are open throughout the day and evening. And the bowling family center would be 20% occupied during the day and then 100% occupied in the evening. So when we look at the required parking, it's broken down into daytime and nighttime. We see that it's below the parking supply of 344 when including all three properties. Given that there is a possibility that either one or two of these agreements are not in effect, there is a condition of approval that requires the applicant to provide an estoppel certificate confirming that these agreements are still valid and can be relied upon. So in the event that one, 635, the shared parking agreement between the subject property and 635 is not valid, this would be the required parking along with the parking supply. So we would, we see this scenario as still being in compliance with parking, again, adopting the assumptions from the 1995 parking study. In the scenario that the shared parking agreement is not valid from, with 647, but valid with 635, the parking will still be satisfied, as we see here on the table. And given this scenario here in this analysis that I ran with the applicant, the applicant is asking for a modification to condition of approval of 4.12 to allow an estoppel certificate from either adjacent property, not both. As written, it can be read as requiring an estoppel certificate from both properties. So in this case, we see since parking would be satisfied with either or, that's the modification that the applicant is requesting. The staff is supportive of that change. Scenario four would be if the applicant cannot provide an estoppel certificate from both, then condition of approval 4.13 addresses that. This requires that the applicant provide a shared parking study to be approved by planning commission, so essentially coming back to planning commission to review that, which would be a parking study that shows the shared parking arrangement within 641 only, not depending on any adjacent property. As far as SEQA, staff is recommending that the planning commission determine the project is categorically exempt under Sections 15301, Class 1. We determine that there is no supplemental review necessary, given that also potential environmental impacts were reviewed in the 1995 MND mitigated negative declaration. In conclusion, the project as condition is consistent with general plan policies and code requirements. And therefore, staff recommends the planning commission determine the project is exempt from SEQA and approve the project subject to conditions and requested modifications to conditions. And this concludes my presentation. And I do have the applicant and her team available for questions.
All right, David, thank you for that report. Just ask my colleagues, did anyone have a question of staff before we move on? Commissioner Crandall does.
For me and the audience, can you explain the estoppel?
Yeah, so that's a document that would confirm the validity of the shared parking agreements. And Jenna, if you want to add more to that?
So as, excuse me, as set forth in the staff report, there were concerns that, of the possibility that the parking agreements that are attached to the resolution in the staff report may not be valid. And so that is the purpose of the condition of approval 4.12, which would be to make sure that those parking agreements are valid and that they are meeting the parking requirements. And if they're not valid, then they would have to enter into a new agreements.
Did you have anything follow up? Yeah, keep going.
One more, one more question. Did the traffic and parking look at the fact that Site 635 parking lot is not contiguous with the parking lot? So people would have, if they couldn't find parking, they'd have to go out onto the street, over to that lot, and in.
Yes, that was acknowledged in the original review as well. And for this process, correct? Yes.
Okay. Anyone else? Commissioner McCann?
Why is it a requirement that they have a public telephone? And what does that even look like these days?
That's a, it's a strict application of the code in requiring that through the condition. I'm assuming, given that it's common for children to visit these places more than adults, by them getting dropped off, it seems like the intent was to allow for some communication from children to parents. That's my guess, but.
I mean, do they have phones, like, stick a quarter in it now? Or a credit card, or what is it? I haven't seen one in, like, 20 years.
So I did go over that with the applicant, and they are open to having a phone available for anyone that wants to use the phone.
It is also an ADA requirement that all public spaces have at least one phone available and accessible to both wheelchair-blind, hearing impaired, and children.
Did you have any other? And Mr. Davis?
That's a good point. So if the applicant will make a phone available, they could, they could do that and not have the burden of the cost and expense of putting in a pay phone? They could just have, they could have a sign or something that says, you know, "Phone available to public"?
That's my understanding, and I can have the applicant clarify that, but that's, I think that's what they're going for.
David, the parking seems to be where all the attention is being focused. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. What concerns do you have about the parking?
We address them as the staff report noted and as condition. If it turns out that the applicant cannot provide any estoppel certificate, I can see the applicant being concerned with just, with coming back to the planning commission to review the shared parking study for the subject property only, not depending on adjacent properties. Staff does believe that either option is feasible, assuming that the shared parking study, if they have to come back to planning commission, concludes that it is able to support the shared parking arrangement.
Let me see if I can unpack that.
Yeah.
Okay. So we have three parking lots associated with the units. And maybe you can go to the map. Yeah, we have 635, 641, 647. 641 is the primary lot, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. The applicant, by virtue of the calculations that the city zoning code has, is required to provide 122 spots. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. It is, is it staff's determination that the spots available in Lot 641 are not adequate to cover the 122?
Let me show this here. So scenario four includes required parking for the Theater Plaza only. So and that 209 includes a 122 plus all the other uses in that plaza. With, without the adjacent properties, they would be deficient in parking, as shown here.
So one side or the other would enter into a shared parking agreement to meet the requirement?
Correct.
Okay. And it, it seems like you're looking at the parking burden as a whole. You're not just looking at it by virtue of this project alone. You're considering all tenants.
Correct.
All parking.
Yes.
Okay. What parking, if any entitlement runs with this land for this, is it for the site as a whole or is it by suite? Is it the parking entitlement that runs with the land, is that for the whole, 641 as a whole?
Yes, as a whole.
Okay. So that's why you're looking at it as a whole?
Correct.
Okay. That, that clears that up. Okay, is there any other questions before we invite the applicant up from the, the team up here? All right. David, thank you as usual. We appreciate that and your report. David, who is the, who, who are we going to call up for the, as the applicant?
Missy, Melissa?
Welcome.
Thank you.
We give the applicant 10 minutes, so if you don't mind, maybe introduce yourself and then we've got a little timer there for the 10 minutes, but you'll, you'll be able to come back after the public comments as well if you'd like.
Okay, perfect. Good evening, and thank you for your time. My name is Melissa Parkin, and my husband Drew and I are the applicants for the bowl. With us tonight is also members of our team, Gary Wiggle, local architect from San Clemente from Kaisker and Wiggle Architects, Trissa Allen, our senior traffic engineer with LLG Engineers, Donna Erdl, our property manager for the landlord, and all the amazing local community that is here in support of our project. I myself am a professional bowler and one of the best bowlers in the world. I was recently inducted into the bowling hall of fame, and my, I've been in the bowling industry my entire life. My husband and I have owned and operated successful bowling businesses since 2011. We are well-known major players in the bowling industry, and we also previously owned a 44-lane bowling center in San Diego that also had a type 47 liquor license. We're excited to bring our knowledge and expertise to this project and create a fun and safe family entertainment venue in our local community as we are also San Clemente residents. Our vision is to create a fun and safe community gathering spot for our local families and businesses. We have a seven-year-old, and right now we're having to travel, you know, to Irvine Spectrum to Dave and Buster's or Laguna Niguel for Chuck E. Cheese. You know, we're driving away from our local community, and I know soon we might also have a mini golf course at the Vista Hermosa Sports Park. And we want to create more entertainment opportunities for our families and our community to stay local. Our project, David, do we have the slide? Sorry. Are the PowerPoint?
Tamara, they're asking to switch over to their PowerPoint? And maybe we can pause the timer while you're doing that? Or we'll just tack on a few, an extra minute if we need to?
If we can't access it, I can, I can keep going. Okay.
While they're searching, can I ask you guys, are you planning on bringing up members of your team to address anything or is it just you guys?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so you, you've, you've got a little time management plan to make it all work in the 10?
Yep.
Awesome.
Thank you.
That is appreciated. Thank you.
Yes. That's okay. I can keep going. It was, is basically a bunch of pictures showing you fun stuff that we're going to have in our, in our facility. I can just briefly go over it. So we are going to have 18 state-of-the-art bowling lanes. We're going to have 10 lanes downstairs, eight lanes upstairs. We are going to have a full arcade featuring the latest in gaming and also a redemption store. We're going to have three multi-sport simulator suites, and those are going to include golf, baseball for both hitting and pitching, soccer, football, hockey, and more. And we're also going to have two projection dart suites, and this is new technology. It's actually very cool. It's like traditional darts, like combined with a video game. So it's like a giant screen where you can play like giant tic-tac-toe games with darts, and it's perfect for all ages and levels. We also are going to have a full chef-inspired restaurant and bar and a hidden speakeasy bar. And as mentioned too, we're going to have specific VIP areas that will be suitable for birthday parties and corporate events. It will truly be a fun and safe gathering spot to create lifelong memories for our community. We are a bowling anchored project since that is the number one participatory sport in the world. It can be participated by all ages and skill levels. I started my son out when he was one and a half years old, and my father is almost 80 years old, and he's still bowling league and having a great time. So it's something that everybody can do. Not only will our project create jobs for the community, but it'll also drive more business to the entire shopping center and create a community gathering spot for our city. At this time, I would like to address some of the questions that come up. So as far as the telephone goes, so in a bowling center, when you walk in, there's a main central control desk, like a guest services desk. We will have a hard telephone line there, and we will have a sign up for that requirement saying if anybody needs to use our phone, they can use the phone to call out. So we will have that. And I do know that we, we also, just so you are all aware, we did go door-to-door to every single tenant in the shopping center and introduced ourselves, and we also left a letter if, for some reason, the general manager, the owner wasn't there. We left a, a letter with our contact information and David Creo's contact information to go ahead and reach out with any questions or comments. And all the feedback that we received was very positive from everybody inside the shopping center. So with the parking, because I know that seems to be the main thing, so our project, I just want to emphasize this, our project requires less than half of the parking spots than the previous approved, approved use, so of the movie theater. We are only requiring 122 spaces compared to 315 parking spaces. And at this time, if we want somebody to come up, we can have our traffic engineer come up and talk about the traffic congestion. Would you guys like comments from her?
It's your, it's your, it's your, whatever you decide.
Okay. It's Trissa? This is our traffic engineer, Trissa.
Hi. Good evening, members of the planning commission. Glad to be here again. I am here at your service if you have any questions with regards to the traffic study that we did do. I just, first of all, wanted to mention that the focus, that our study scope for this is traffic, which means that we had looked at basically site access conditions, levels of service at the main intersection. We looked at queuing conditions as well. We had applied, as you probably have seen it in other traffic studies in the city, we applied ITE trip generation ratios to both the prior use, the movie theater, and the proposed, the bowl use, which is a bowling alley that ITE inherent in the ITE trip generation rate would be food uses and all sorts of different activities in there too. So one thing's for sure, we definitely worked closely with, with city staff in trying to make sure that the city traffic engineers study requirements that we had addressed. So the, the one thing though is that I know that there seems to be a lot of questions with regards to, to parking. I just wanted to point out that our study does not include an evaluation of the, whether it be the 1995 parking study, shared parking study that was done. But one thing is, I do, I would like to note however, that in my review of the city staff report, and in there, the way they described how they approached doing the parking count, estimating the parking demand for the project, and in basically also providing context on what the 1995 shared parking study had concluded, it's right, it's pretty, it's pretty, it's pretty standard. It's definitely something that fits within pretty current parking standards, parking needs for the project as proposed. So I just wanted to say that, that even though we did not get the chance to dive deep into the weeds of parking, that from an overall global standpoint, it seemed that the city staff report on parking seems pretty good.
We're, we're going to let you do the full 10 minutes. We're not going to interrupt your questions or anything.
Okay, perfect. And then I also wanted to have Gary come up in case you had any questions about the occupancy. So if Gary can come up, because our original occupancy, I mean, he can talk more about it, but our original occupancy was only 539 people. He can go ahead and dive a little deeper into that.
Good evening, Gary Wiggle, Kaisker and Wiggle Architects, and a 45-year San Clemente resident as well, hoping this gets approved tonight so we can use it. We've been working with OCFA and city staff on the occupancy. California building code has a table that tells you by use what the occupancy numbers are. You take square footages times that number, you get totals. OCFA then says, now we've got the total number of people, how do we get them out the doors? We show pathways, we show door widths. It's a big mathematical calculation to come up with it. So the 534, I think it was the number that we came up with originally, is probably the realistic number of people that will be in there. And if you've been in that space, that's going to be all of us standing fairly close to each other. The thousand or 13 or whatever it is, 1100, 1200, that is by the absolute strict application of the building code to each of the areas. And as, as an example, the 10 bowling lanes downstairs, they give you the bowling lane, they give you the 15 feet of where you release the ball. However, the actual ball return that you start at is even further behind that. But they come up with over 20 people per lane in the calculation. I've, I've never seen 20 people at a single bowling lane, let alone a 10 of them. That's 200 and something people. The arcade area is basically based on a gross floor area. If you've been to a Dave and Buster's or been to another current arcade, it's no longer the tiny little pinball machine or the little shallow shoot 'em. These are half-room size, you know, elements for each of them. So those numbers, they have 287 occupants in that space. And if you look at the space allocation with the games as we've laid them out, the ones that we've, we've looked at, that's, that's also a very high number that realistically probably will not be achieved. However, the good news is, is that with the occupant load at the full amount the fire department wanted to, we have adequate circulation space and adequate exiting all the way along. So we're fully compliant with code.
Great. That, that concludes your time. Did that pretty much wrap up what you had to present?
Yes.
You got everything out?
Yeah, we did.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for being here and bearing with us while we had your little slide snafu. I guess it's somewhere in our city filing system, but we, we definitely heard you loud and clear, so thank you for that. Before I invite members of the public up, did any of my colleagues want to ask any more questions before we proceed to the public comments? None? Gary, you did a public comment card. Did you want to, did you, no, okay.
In case I spoke.
Okay, very good. I'm gonna, what I'm going to do is call up like three at a time, so just come on up in the order that I call you. If you're, and if you want to queue over here to the side, and then that way we can just keep it moving, that's kind of the most efficient way to, to do that when we have this many speakers. So I'm going to first, I'm going to go ahead and call up Casey Shed, followed by Josh Harper, followed by Clark Coles. And each member of the public will have three minutes. We have a little timer on the screen, and you don't need to take the full three if you don't want to.
Yeah, I won't.
Okay, you are Casey.
Yes, sir, yep.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. So Casey Shed, have three kids here in San Clemente, employ about 95 folks in, in Orange County through also a family-owned business. And just speaking in support of the bowling alley, I think, you know, San Clemente's pretty insular. I think the only time I leave San Clemente during the weekend is to go to a birthday party of other San Clemente families going to Ladera or Ranch of Biscavia or somewhere because we don't have the event space here. And then my only other second comment is I actually coached baseball with Drew. He's a great man, a great human, great around kids. His wife Missy's also wonderful around kids. You know, the kind of people I would definitely trust my kids with. So that's it. Thanks, guys. Final comment, actually, it's pretty cool. I've never been to one of these.
Yes?
Yeah, it's like very thorough and all, it's very, it's pretty neat, so.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you so much, and welcome, and thanks for your comments. Josh Harper, hello, welcome, sir.
Josh Harper, San Clemente dad, resident, one of the worst bowlers in the world, Melissa, so we haven't crossed paths.
Oh, you're bookends.
Yeah, so what are the odds we're in the same room? As a father of a seven-year-old, 20-plus-year resident here, you know, this is something I really look forward to coming. I know Drew, I've coached against Drew, so I'm not here as a, as an assistant, I'm here as an adversary. And so I've seen what he's done over the league in the last few years and just how he's enhanced that, and I, you know, I think he can do a lot with something like this for the community and the families. Personally, we've been going to Ladera Ranch to Lucky Strike Bowling for the, like, about once a month. So I would love to have something here for us. I don't like to go past La Pata. I don't want to go on the freeway on the weekend, so I think this will be a really good project for the community, so. And in Drew and Melissa's hands, this could be something that's really great. I also frequent this shopping center a lot, and I know some of the business owners, and I've, I talked to them about this, you know, like, gave them my opinion, what they thought, they're for it, you know? Quote, their quote was, rising tides lift all ships. So what's good for them is going to be good for everybody. So wanted to share that. Thanks for your time.
Oh, thank you for your comments. Okay, we've got Clark Coles next, followed by Gene Grody, I think it is?
Hello, commissioners, my name's Clark Coles. Myself and my family moved to San Clemente in 2021. We've been overwhelmed with how lucky we were unwittingly in, in moving to this community. We've, my family and I have known Drew and Missy for the past year and a half. Our kids go to the same school. It's, it's really been wonderful getting to know them, and we're, we're really excited for this project, to be able to, you know, have some fun family entertainment, local, have another great restaurant to go to. My son and I frequent the sushi establishment that's in that center, so we're really familiar with it. And I have two boys, six and three, and I'm in a similar boat to probably a lot of us where we have to go up to Ladera, have to go to Chuck E. Cheese. I'm really excited for some of the events, some of the video games that are fun for all ages for my three-year-old to be able to do. He kind of gets bored at Chuck E. Cheese writing the same little card that goes like this, so being able to play the dart simulators and things like that will be a lot of fun for him. I think it's a great addition for the community. One other point that I'd like to make is part of my professional life, I'm in sales, and I tend to host a lot of what would be corporate events for sales teams. We do a lot of sales training. I work in the channel. That's a popular thing to do where we take out a sales team of, you know, six to 10 individuals to go do something. And I have to drive up to, you know, Elsa Gundo to the closest Topgolf or something else to do some type of these simulators. I think that this is such a great way to involve both fun for the family and community, but also for corporate events. San Clemente is a great central location between sales teams that are down in San Diego and Los Angeles. So I think this will be a great way to, you know, really increase revenue and opportunity for a lot of businesses within the community and within the, the center as well. So I'm really looking forward to it, is it, it checks a lot of boxes as far as positive influence. That's it. Thank you for my time. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments.
Gene Grody, San Clemente. I live literally across the street. I live right by Agua and Ocean Hills. There's 268 homes in there. I did a quick straw poll, asking people on the golf course and that if they wanted this or not. Unanimously, believe it or not, wanted it, and I'm maybe, I'm sure there's people that don't, but everybody is excited about it, as am I. And as far as, you can please rule out the noise factor. If you are on Las Maras, anytime Saturday when the drag races take, are in full bloom, and at night, this theater, or this bowling alley, can't compare at all. So, and it, what also hasn't been mentioned is the jobs. That, I don't know how many employees they're going to have, but I'm sure there'd be a few. And the tax base, I'm sure they'll play taxes on this building. So for me, it's just a win-win. And again, I live right across the street. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for coming out tonight and giving us your. Thank you, sir, for coming out tonight and giving us your comments. That concludes all of the speaker card I have, but I want to invite anyone else in the audience that'd like to speak to come on up. Do we have anyone else that wants to address the group? Sir, please come on, just if you don't mind introducing yourself and then maybe fill out one of these cards, post your presentation?
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. My name is.
Wait, reset the timer, Tamara, please.
Yeah, my name is Ramon Venkat, and my wife Brenda is here. We are very lucky because we are next-door neighbors. So we were very, very pleased when Drew and Missy and, you know, the little kid moved in, and once we came to know that they're going to do this project. I'm the CEO for a small aerospace company in Santa Fe Springs, and I sit on the board of directors of the Santa Fe Springs Chamber of Commerce. So we come across these kind of projects, and, you know, it's a very, in my opinion, noble project for a family-type city that we have, and it creates a great environment for families, apart from all the sales tax, et cetera, that benefits the city, you know, in multiple ways as well. But we're really looking forward to this project, and at the same time, I'm hoping that it won't let Missy and Drew move away from San Clemente too. So with that, that's all I would like to say.
Great, well, thank you for your comments, and we'll just have you fill out a card so we can make your comments as part of the record. Would you like to? Come on up, please. Everybody's welcome to speak tonight if they want to.
So my name is Brenda Ramon, and I'm obviously Ramon's wife. We are much older than Missy and Drew, so the other perspective to this is our kids are much older, and they didn't have all these facilities growing up. We wish they had done it like 25 years ago, so better late than never. So this is a very good project for family fun, and we support it 100%. Thank you.
Thank you. If we could just get, again, your name on the card so we can have you part of the record. Sir, do you want to speak? That'd be great. Come on up. We appreciate all the public comments tonight.
Well, I appreciate the time. Good evening. My name is Alex Wasserman. I too am a local San Clemente resident. I have four children, and what really excites me about this bowling alley and entertainment center coming up, on top of the immediate benefits that everybody here has mentioned, are the future benefits. As I look forward to my children getting older, they range from one to seven, I look for a safe place for them to play and be entertained locally. And this is something that not only will they be able to do on their own in a trusted environment, and I can speak to the integrity of Drew and Missy as my children go to school with theirs, but it's also something that I, as a parent, look to doing with them and bonding with them here locally. The simulations and the games there, I think, will be great for the children, but also for me, as I need to improve my golf game, not in public eye, per se, but maybe in a simulator. But I'm really looking forward to what this will provide for the future entertainment of our growing children here in the community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And if we could just get you to do a blue card, we'll get your name in the record. Do we have another member of the public that'd like to speak? Come on up to the microphone if you don't mind. We just need to have you part of the record, all the comments tonight.
I am not a bowler, but when I was young, I used to bowl back home, my country. I've been in San Clemente for more than 50 years now, and I see the town grew, and still, I said, how come, you know, we need more action in here, you know, in our city. And I'm not young anymore, so I have a group of old ladies, I call it, you know, and we need some also activity, and maybe, you know, with the help of Missy. In fact, I'm so proud, I'm so proud of her, you know, to convert the theater into a bowling alley. I cannot believe that. You're so great. I don't know how it will look like now, but you really, I look forward to having something exciting, because my grandkids come, and I said, hey, let's go somewhere, there's no place, you know, and some activities. In fact, I really look forward to beautify the city of San Clemente, especially when you go to the freeway, you know, there's no excitement. Is this San Clemente? You know what I mean? But I'm sorry to divert myself into this, but really, we need to beautify our city, because I lived here for 50 years, and really, it's not that great, and I don't know who's going to do that. But again, with this new project, I think I'm so excited, and I've spread it around to all my friends, hey, let's go there, you know, we are going to have an, you know, exciting bowling alley. So thank you so much. Please, I hope you do something about it for the sake of the old and the young members of this community, and we love San Clemente. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do you mind filling out a blue card so we can capture your name for our records? You going to help out with that, Zach? Thanks, man. She, I think she's got a card, so. Okay. Everybody's voice is welcome, and everybody's voice is appreciated. Sir, you, sure, anyone else? And if you're thinking about speaking, just come on up and stand off to the side, and I'll recognize you, and otherwise, we'll wrap it up with this man. Sir.
My name is Stanley Lucas. I've been all over California competing as bowling. I've known Missy for over 20 years. I was an employee of theirs in their pro shop and in their bowling alley. They are amazing, honest people. This project would be wonderful for this city. Just to speak to the thing, I was homeless just five years ago. They were able to pull me up from that. If they can pull someone like me up from that, then what they can do to help your city grow.
Thank you so much for coming forward with your comments and your story. We appreciate that. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Jody Pickering, and I own the business next to the theater. So I'm hair salon, so obviously, I'm excited about it, and I'm right there next door. I have not spoke to you, either one of you, I was kind of hoping to before this. But since I have this opportunity, maybe this might help us for this center to help elevate the whole center. So maybe we can do like a mural, like a surfer mural, or something cool to make the whole center nicer, because I feel like that's something that's been needed for a long time. So I'm hoping you coming in helps the whole center. So I don't really care about the parking, we'll figure it out.
That is great. Thank you for your comments. Anybody else going once? Someone from the back. Come on up. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. My name's Josh Austin. I actually don't know the applicant, but I am a father of five here in San Clemente, and I would totally love to have a place, I'd love to have the Bowl. Really, I could not be more excited about it, and the empty movie theater, I think would be a great addition, 100%, fully supportive, love it. So I also, if you remember, I was here about a year ago, asking for approval from the city for my golf simulator business, Greenside Golf.
We remember you, yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah, and I've since opened, actually, in 647.
I was going to say, you're in that area.
Yeah, I'm in this, not in 641, but in the adjacent spot. And again, like, I really don't want to, I'm so supportive of this. I am hoping that maybe like with the golf simulators, maybe, I'd love to chat and talk at some point afterwards, just as a new small business, it's been going really well, and a good portion of my business is from memberships, but I get a lot of people who want to come and hang and entertain their families there and host private events and things like that. But again, fully supportive, and I just want to put my hat in support for the Bowl, but would love to chat. But would love to chat, you know, just as, yeah, 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 but, thank you.
Can I say one more thing really quick?
You'll have to come up to the microphone.
Maybe I could propose maybe a small solution for some of the parking. What if we put in a bike lane out front, since we're going to do bike racks, and we could really try to make the area more bicycle-friendly? Because it is this bad traffic out front there, and there's no bike lane as you're coming around that turn right there. And if we put a bike lane, then people could ride their bikes more, maybe that would help alleviate some of the parking. I know I would ride my bike to work if there was a bike lane, but it's very dangerous out front. I know that's a whole nother big.
That's right. It all starts with somebody putting a voice to it, so thank you for the suggestion.
But it'd be really nice to have a bike lane out here, and then we could put more bike racks up, be bike-friendly, so it's just among the neighbors.
Okay. Any other speakers? I'm going to go ahead and deem that part of our public hearing then complete. Before I close the public hearing, we all see Zach Ponsen here, he's in the audience, along with Ryan Kim, our two traffic engineers, and from our engineering department. Do we have any questions of either Zach, or Ryan, or David before we close?
Chair, and we, sorry, but we should also let the applicant, if they want the additional three minutes for rebuttal.
You're right, you're right. So while you're thinking of your questions, thank you for that. Did you, you're good? Yeah. No questions really for you to answer, are there? Okay. So Commissioner Crandall, questions?
I've got one for David. We've got this one picture that shows 641 squared off in blue with the other two properties. And I just noticed that 641 doesn't have, I'm assuming, the parking spaces in, that are in front of 647. Can you pull that up on the screen? It's Attachment 2.
Staff report.
Yeah, staff report. I went out to the site, and today at 2:00, and counting the spaces in front of 647, there were 72 vacant spaces at 2:00. But on, if you just count 641, there's only like 40-something. Can 641 and 647 satisfy all the parking?
Yes, 641 and 647 together can satisfy parking.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think, if I don't, just to tag on, I think it's either one, right? Either side.
Correct.
We'll do it.
Correct.
The other one's not as accessible.
Yeah, right, okay. So are you suggesting that perhaps the, you say steer towards 647 as the first choice? Is that where you're going with that?
I think it would be the logical choice. It may not be the most available choice, but we'll see how that sorts out.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure that one or the other, or both, and what our options are.
Commissioner Davis, did you have any follow-ups?
David, real quick, so 647, if they agree, can they, with the stopple, can they have, can we do just half of, like, you know, so the parking lot that's more towards the Bowl, you see on the, I guess, west side of the building right there? What if they allotted, I mean, they could separate that and just grab those two rows and satisfy, I would suppose, just looking at that? They can negotiate that, it doesn't have to be all or nothing, right?
Yeah, that's possible, but as written now, the agreement includes the entire parcel.
Okay, but it might be an option to get half of that and still satisfy.
That's been done in the past, yeah. Historically, that's been done.
Okay, so that's an option, and this goes to Zach out there. So, great point with the bike racks, I love the bike rack idea, and I know city council meeting last night, you were talking about bike lanes. Is there anything in the works as far as this location with bike lanes? I know when I plug it in my maps, it kind of takes me that way, but.
No.
No.
So unless we're going to start tearing down buildings and widening right away, there's no room on this arterial road for bike lanes. I'll note also, this bike, this road was just improved and completed about two years ago.
Got it.
So for about $5 million, they did the upgrades, analyzed it at that time, and vehicular traffic is needed at the lanes that are there.
Understood, thank you. Who would, where, David maybe, or Zach? Appropriate amount of bike, you know, bike slots? Who determines that? I'd probably not use that. Yeah, it's David. So like five slots, 10 slots, how many bike hoops?
Yeah, so this is not a codified standard, so one of the things actually we're looking at, that has broader application through our LCP work, is consideration of replacement value. So if you replace, if you provide X number of bike stalls, that can count as a parking stall. That's something that the planning division's currently evaluating, but it's not a current code standard. So in this case, with the bowling alley, it references, or an amusement center, that there should be bike accessibility, again, kind of with the thought that some kids might arrive independently on a bike as opposed to in a vehicle, but it doesn't establish a specific number that are required.
Got it, okay. That's it for right now.
Okay. Scott, did you have anything?
No.
Okay. David, I just want to, just confirmation, so, because I think I missed the DMT for this particular project. OCFA did sign off on occupancy? Yes?
We have not received the quote-unquote preliminary approval, but they have been reviewing it. I think they've gone through like three rounds with the applicants, and they're at a point where that final version would be going back to OCFA once they get to the building permit.
Gotcha.
But, yes, they've been working closely.
And then they'll realign it with that occupancy.
Correct.
Okay. And I presume the applicant understands that and will be in agreement with that, and they're nodding, so that's important. The traffic study that they did, I think that was in our report, and is that right? I didn't see any issues with level of services. It all looked like no impact really to level of service on drive aisles, intersection, those, you know, turning lanes, all more or less remains the same as it is now.
Correct, that's the addendum to the original traffic study.
Okay. Let's see. I don't, she already waved it. Yeah, I don't think I have anything else. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and close the, Commissioner Crandall wants to jump in one real quick, real quick.
Just wanted to touch bases with the city attorney here. Can you summarize and explain the current condition of, I guess, negotiations with the easements and so forth, because we're being asked to approve a project that is incomplete in its parking solution at this point.
I don't have the information, so I am going to defer this over to Jonathan.
Thank you. So I'm going to zoom out a little bit so everyone's aware of the conversation. So on the screen right now, we again show three different properties, 635, 641, 647. There are, as a component of the 1995 parking study, there are two easement agreements, one between 635 and 641, and one between 641 and 647. So we took a look at those easement agreements, they do have, one in particular has specific references to a theater, so there are conditions of approval that say that the staff's assessment is that the math of the parking analysis is still valid, so long as those agreements are still valid. And so we relayed that information to the applicants, and the condition, how that is stated, is that they have to provide, as you'd mentioned earlier, estoppel certificates to confirm the validity. For clarification, between 647 and 641, an estoppel certificate alone would suffice. It was brought to our attention that there's some language, well, A, very specific to the theater, and B, that have some references to alcohol in the agreement between 635 and 641. That's the less preferred location anyways, as the commission has referenced. So the path forward for the applicant would be ideally to provide an estoppel certificate for the easement between 641 and 647. for the easement between 641 and 647. That would satisfy the condition here. If they're unable to do that, then we would be taking a look at shared parking just on the 641 property alone. We have done that before at this exact location for a medical office use. So we can talk to them about that eventuality if they're not able to obtain an estoppel certificate or revise that agreement with the 647 property. But the, as far as the negotiations with the property owners, staff's not current on the most recent discussions between those private parties.
Bart, was that it?
At the start, yes.
Okay. I'm just flipping through the conditions of approval. I just want to, I don't really, these look very standard, David. These are all standard conditions of approval. Really, I don't really see anything.
The majority, there are some project-specific conditions.
Right, but those have been all just thoroughly discussed tonight and in your staff report, mostly around hours of operation and basically around hours of operation, I think, and then the estoppel. Those are the two.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, this looks pretty straightforward. So I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and turn to my colleagues for any discussion. Does anyone want to lead off? Or Commissioner Crandall, you want to lead us off?
Yeah, I think the building and what the architect has presented and all is certainly a great idea, and I'd welcome this project to the city with open arms. We have the obligation to make sure we have adequate parking, but there's three, I guess three, or is it four options that are in the conditions that they have to pursue. My preference would be that they can work something out with 647. Because I've never liked, even when it was a theater, the people just didn't go over to 635. They'd go into the shopping center across the street and walk across the street. So I'd much prefer to have it where, once they enter the lot, they can find a parking space and mill around. So that would be by my preference. I do have a couple of things I'll mention on, this building is totally unique as far as any project we have in town, that they capture everything inside this building. There are no outdoor patios, and it was a movie theater, and I don't know if it was six or eight theaters. Anybody remember? But six. They could have six movies going simultaneously, and it did not offend the neighborhood, and that building is built for that very purpose, that it's pretty much able to capture all the sound inside. So if the live entertainment, I don't know what is the point in this particular location to limit to Thursday, Friday, Saturday, or whatever. It's not going to affect the neighborhood, it's not going to affect the sound. I'd be open to giving more latitude in the live entertainment. As far as the planning commission approving, or even the planning department approving the lighting intensity inside in an indoor space, I'm a little uncomfortable with that. That's not really the purview of a planning commission or the planning department. That's a building code issue and a life safety issue. So, I mean, I can certainly support it, but I don't think it's absolutely necessary. Hours of operations, if the applicant's happy with those, that's fine. This building could use, could handle more operating hours, probably. So I am just concerned with parking, that we aren't approving something that, I'd really like to see what the solution is come before us, rather than just say, if they get one, it's okay, and, but I'd certainly, the project is a slam dunk as far as the building's concerned and the use. But I think that would mean it would only go to city council without planning commission review of circulation, parking, if there's any changes to the parking lots as far as landscaping is concerned, et cetera, et cetera. And I don't know if we can put a condition of approval if there are changes, and I'd let David or Jonathan come up with something that if there are substantial changes in their negotiations, that we could limit that review to strictly parking and not the use. I don't, see, we don't need to revisit the use or the occupancy or the occupant load that the project's architect has mentioned. I think those all are pretty slam dunk. That's very straightforward. So think about that a little bit, and I'm certainly a supporter of the project, just want to make sure we do it right.
Okay. I'm a little not sure I tracked the city council. I think we're the final approval body.
Unless appealed.
Unless appealed, yeah. So you, okay, fine, fair enough. And then I don't believe we're involved unless there is an inability to secure a shared parking agreement. Otherwise, it moves forward. That's your understanding? I want to make sure we have the same understanding.
It's part of the conditional use permit.
Yeah.
So we've got to approve the conditional use.
Which is, right.
And once that's codified, it shouldn't include all of these options, you know? Those are going to be stricken out. Don't apply.
David, can you just, real quickly, just tell me where to look to find the estoppel COA? What number is it?
I think Tamra's looking for it here. It might be 4.12 or 4.13.
Yeah, I'm on 4. All right. I can go ahead and keep looking.
4.12.
Thank you, sir. 4.12, okay. Commissioner Davis, did you have thoughts you want to share?
Yeah. One, I've never had such a kumbaya-type public comment, ever. This many people showing up or something is so supportive, it's wonderful. And, you know, stars lining up with a Hall of Famer opening up a business in our town that, in which she specializes in, that that's the business that's opening up. I think it's phenomenal. And as far as the parking, I think it's, that's been everybody's concern. I'm comfortable with relying on the staff to make sure the estopples are in place, and then maybe there's some kind of trigger that if something doesn't work out with the options that have been laid before us, if one of those don't work out, then they could bring it back, or we could reevaluate that as a planning commission. If we have to do something else with maybe the layout of the landscape, that's kind of a good idea. And everything else Bart said, I was really in line with, but I don't know that we need to see it again. I think we can possibly rely on the staff to implement the conditions of what has been presented to us. But other than that, what a phenomenal, tremendous project. I love it, but I'd like to hear everybody else.
Sure. Okay. Commissioner McCann, did you want to?
Sure. I'm supportive of the project. It seems like a great project, and I'm sure you'll do well. Bart, what's your uneasiness about just if they get the estoppel agreements as proposed, that we would still need to see it, or?
That's what I was trying to drill into. Well, basically, they're going to have to rewrite those easements completely. So it's going to be a whole new shared parking agreement.
Well, it sounded like if it was on the 637 one, it would have to be rewritten, but if it was the 647 or whichever one, that it was just like a confirmation that it was still in place. That's what it sounded like to me.
Let's see, the, one occupancy use is actually on the, what is it?
The 635.
Other site, yeah, so.
That one was, 635 was the one that would have to be rewritten.
So would they have to rewrite it? I didn't put the whole agreement to memory, but if it doesn't require rewriting it or renegotiating it, because they do have the cloud looming over their head, that they may not still be valid. And if that's the case, it has, it would have to be renegotiated.
Well, could it just say, or documentation to the satisfaction of the city attorney? Or something like that?
Absolutely. It just needs to be in there. We just need.
Right, okay.
Cross the Ts and dot the Is.
It is, sorry. It is in there.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah. To be approved by the city attorney and recorded. And 4.12.
Bart, you're not advocating that we alter any of the conditions, are you?
Yeah, I'd take 4.2 out. I don't think that's really a purview of.
The lighting?
The interior lighting. I think that's an overstep, but I'm sure they had a reason, but that's a building issue.
Jonathan, did you want to speak to that, please?
I have no concern with that being removed.
Good.
And I am in support of them having more leeway on live entertainment. That building is so acoustically solid that I don't see it would hurt to give them the opportunity, if somebody wants a party in one of the rooms, to be able to get a little combo or whatever, or just a guitarist and a microphone. But this would preclude you on a couple of nights, and I don't think that's necessary.
You're speaking about 7.11.
I'm talking about.
Is that right? Because I think that's just the speakeasy bar is the.
Live entertainment, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and holidays from 5:00 to 10:00.
But that's just limited within, with indoor, to indoors within the speakeasy bar area as shown on the approved concept plan, 5:00 PM and 10:00 PM, Thursday through Saturday.
And we do that certainly in town and.
Yeah.
Whatnot, where sound is an issue. That's not a problem here.
Well, the applicant had requested longer hours. I was going to make a motion or amend a motion to be in supportive of the hours that David referenced in his staff report that the applicant had requested.
I think what, you added a, you moved to 11:30.
11:30. And then it also added some like Monday through Wednesday nights or something, hours. I think 5:00 to 10:00, Monday through Wednesday, and.
Can we review that real quick? Yeah. But that doesn't involve the live entertainment. That's just operation.
No, I think, no, that was the amplified sound. Yeah. Because their hours go to.
It's annoying, Tamra.
Tamra, can we bring that back up on the screen, please?
So I think their hours go to midnight, but the live entertainment was written to end at 10:00, but they requested to go and send in it, or amplified sound to 11:30.
Live entertainment was Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
That's what I just read. 7.11 is the condition on that.
Right. The staff wrote it as 5:00 to 10:00, but they were proposing to extend it to 11:30. If you look down at the bottom in the small print of the slide there, applicant requested 5:00 PM to 11:30, Thursday through Saturday and holidays, and also 5:00 to 10:30, Sunday through Wednesday. And the applicant is nodding seemingly good with that.
Yeah, and that is exactly, Bart, what you're referring to as well. It's the same condition of approval, 7.11. Okay, so whoever's going to make the motion would need to, if we're all in agreement.
Support those hours.
Support those hours.
Right.
Let me, let's just take a straw poll. Is everyone supportive of that?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Can you leave that up so we can reference it by, in our motion, David? If you don't mind? Okay. So what I'm tracking so far is removal of 4.2, and then a change to 7.11 to extend the hours as 5:00 PM to 11:30, Thursday through Saturday and holidays, and then, oh, you moved back, right? Just leave it there if you don't mind. Yeah. 5:00 PM to 10:30 on Sunday through Wednesday. Okay. Was there, did anybody find anything else that, on conditions of approval, they wanted to modify? Since we're talking, that's where we're at right now in our conversation.
Chair Cosgrove, there was one more request.
Yes, sir.
To amend a condition that was. 4.12 to allow an estoppel certificate from either and not both.
Yes, very good. Okay.
Yes, absolutely.
I'm in, everyone, straw poll, everyone agree with that? Good, okay.
That's precisely what we need.
Chair, I do need to chime in. So it should be an estoppel certificate or a shared parking agreement pursuant. I'm fine with the either-or language because it meets the parking requirements with the either-or, as we've seen. But in what, we might, if it, is my understanding with 635, that is more likely that we would need to have a parking agreement there versus a certificate of estoppel. But as long as, you know, to the satisfaction of the city attorney.
Yeah, as I read.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, we're on 4.12, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so it does say that the applicant will shall submit to the city planner either an estoppel from the grand tour, which are these easements that Commissioner Crandall's talking about. And so instead of saying of each, it would be either. Would that be the right word? Either the 1996 shared parking agreement. Okay. Or you're saying, or a shared parking agreement? Is that, you want to insert the word "or" in there? Or are we just changing the word "each" to "one"? Because there is a reference to a shared parking agreement, and.
I think if we just change the word "each."
Got it.
To either, that would satisfy everything.
Got it, okay. Anything else on COAs? I will wrap up our conversation by saying that I agree with all of my colleagues up here tonight. This has been a very pleasant public hearing with a lot of support from the community, which is really nice to hear, and it's well-deserved. And you are putting your capital into San Clemente, and that's appreciated. Not only are you bringing your capital, but you're bringing your heart and soul, and that matters because that's what we're about here. We are required to make four findings tonight in order to grant your two permits, and I think that you knock it out of the park on every one of them, on all four. The site is suitable, for sure, and it's absolutely not detrimental to public health safety or welfare, in fact, quite the opposite. It is improving that, and it will not negatively impact surrounding areas, and you are compliant with the zone. So those are the findings we need to make, and I can make those findings. Can all my colleagues make the findings as well?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay. And regarding motions, I've got. Okay, and regarding motions, I've got some notes here. Or does someone else want to take the lead? Okay, I'm going to go ahead. Okay. Let me just get to the section here. Do we need to make a finding on CEQA, David? I haven't gotten to your staff recommendations yet.
It's one of the two recommendations.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get to that page. Here we go. Got it. Okay, I will move that, one, we determine that this project is categorically exempt from the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act using CEQA Guideline Section 15301, which is, it's an existing facility. So it doesn't really, it is exempt. Number two, that we adopt the Resolution PC 25-006 approving the minor conditional use permit. So that's MCUP 25-033 and the conditional use permit, CUP 25-032, the bowl subject to the attached conditions of approval with the following amendments from the Planning Commission. One, or A, Condition 4.2 is removed. Condition 7.1 is modified to extend the hours. Tamara, would you mind going back, please, to that slide where we had those hours? I can read it into the record, please. Just keep going, you'll get there. There, back, right there, thank you. So we're modifying 7.11 to extend the hours of operation from 5:00 p.m. to 11:30 p.m. Thursday through Saturday and holidays, and 5:00 p.m. to 10:30 p.m. Sunday through Wednesday. So that's item B. C, we are modifying Condition 4.12 to strike the word, what was it? Each with the word either. Colleagues, did I get it all, everybody's input?
Yeah.
David, did I get everyone's input? All right, that is my motion.
Seconded.
Seconded by Scott McCann, Commissioner McCann. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Congratulations. You have your permit in 10 days to make sure there's no appeal. Congratulations, and thank you for all you're doing for our town. We appreciate it.
Good luck with your easement.
Yes, if you have any issues, call David, he'll help you. Yeah, yeah. We'll just give it a few minutes to let everybody... Yeah, filter out before we move to the next item. Okay, we're going to resume our business tonight. If you don't mind, maybe we could, yeah, you guys could just take your conversations out to the hall.
Thank you, everybody.
Good luck to you.
We'll see you at the opening. Thank you so much. Okay. Let me get to our agenda. Okay, we've concluded our public hearings. Now we are moving on to new business. It's Agenda Item 9. We have 9A, it's an installation of red curb on Cali Frontera. It's a request of the Planning Commission to consider forwarding a recommendation to the City Council on installation of a red curb for a driveway at 421 Cali Frontera. We have Zach Ponson, the City Assistant Engineer, to provide an overview of this request. Zach?
Good evening, Commissioners. Zach Ponson, Assistant City Engineer, tonight in front of you. I have a very quick presentation. The new senior facility called the Seville on Cali Frontera is pretty popular and is now open. And we did receive quite a few actual comments, but it's very hard to get out of their drive approach. There's not a buffer lane, there's not a bike lane there. So there's a few things that staff is in support of adding 40 feet to the left of the drive approach when you're looking to get out, and also 20 feet to the right if you were to be turning left. And with that, I'm open for questions.
Any questions of Mr. Ponson? I think it's pretty straightforward, but I'll turn to my colleagues, Commissioner Crandall.
Being that it's a senior community, are these big enough?
We believe so.
Would you be happier to have them a little bit larger?
We believe this is a good distance. With the curvature of Frontera here, they're actually on the good side of the curvature. If it was curved the other way, we'd probably be lengthening these out a little bit more. Parking does overflow into this area, so we're trying not to have too much impact on the parking.
Any other questions on this item? Okay. Thanks, Zach. I think we are going to, I will, let's see here, we need to...
Chair, I'm sorry, I'm interrupting a lot tonight. Just making sure that we have, there is a gentleman in the audience, so just making sure we didn't have any public comments.
Nope, he says no.
Okay.
Okay, Zach, did that conclude all of your comments?
Yes.
Okay, and do I have any other Commissioner questions? Discussion or motions? I got it right here. I'll move staff recommendations. One, recommend to the City Council to determine that the project is categorically exempt as an existing facility. And two, we forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council for the proposed red curbs as shown in Attachment 1 of the staff report.
And I will second that.
Great, seconded by Commissioner Crandall. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passing unanimously. Thanks for staying late.
Thank you.
Mr. Kim and Mr. Ponson. Good to see you both tonight. Thank you so much. That was easy. Now, Item 10 is old business. We don't have any. We have only then Item 11, reports. Any Commissioner have any reports?
I have a question on the TFA.
Yes.
What's SIP update next meeting?
Yeah, so that item's actually going to get tabled. So SIP is the Strategic Implementation Plan, and we do an annual update on that in association with the budget. But now that the city has moved to a biannual budget, the next update's just going to come in advance of the next budget adoption. So we won't be doing that update this year.
Okay, awesome.
Jonathan, did you want to go, or do you want me to go about last night?
Please, please do, Chair.
Okay, so last night, the City Council had their regular meeting, and on the agenda was an item about the Design Review Subcommittee and its scope. The Council had asked staff to bring in some recommendations. They brought in, I think it was six. And I appeared, Commissioner Crandall appeared, Commissioner Prescott Loeffler appeared to support staff recommendations, which was alternate option one. That was discussed, and I believe they were in favor of it. And the motion included to do some zoning cleanup that the staff had requested as well. So they wanted the Council to approve a work program to do that. And that work program will come back to us, and we'll discuss it. Jonathan, will the DRSC recommendation be lumped into that, or is that separate?
It will be lumped into that. They did include, within their motion though, keeping one of those alternatives alive, which was Alternative 3, which was making DRSC optional. So they did not provide direction to select that, but to continue to provide information about that item.
Yeah, and I had quite a bit of conversations today with some people about that, Council members in particular. And where I think the spirit of that is, is there was a desire to keep the, to introduce some flexibility on whether or not, if the applicant felt the nature of their project was something that was straightforward, and they did not feel the need for a design review, that they could opt out. It would, and they use the word voluntary, but I'm using the word opt out. And so that's, when it comes forward, what I'm thinking is we, to facilitate the Council's discussion last night, we could propose that an applicant could choose to opt out. And by filling out a form, that could go to the zoning administrator. And the form would be basically a disclosure that this is what, you give up if you don't get it, you don't go, and that you'll go to the Planning Commission and you are subject to their review of your design. Something of that nature, and could go to the zoning administrator. And if they were in agreement, then they could be granted a pass and go right to planning. Something of that nature. But we can discuss that when it comes back. So that was exciting last night.
Let me ask you, so the DRSC, how many times does an applicant come in there that you guys don't have some advice to share with them?
I, I mean, Bart's been at it longer than me. I don't think I've ever seen it where there wasn't some discussion that was...
It all depends on the caliber of the applicant. An architect knows what he's doing. It usually goes straight through, I mean, with no comments. If it's an applicant who's never worked in a city, we just had one a couple of months ago, didn't even know we had design standards. And he'd never even seen the documents. So, you know, yeah, those guys get a lot, a lot of comments.
How does that guy get that far without staff telling him? I mean, staff must have given him some kind of, said, hey, you know...
There are applicants that will not listen.
I've seen it. He's right. I've actually had a guy tell me, I had no, to argue. I think you might have been missing that meeting. You don't have design, and I actually had, I think, Christopher Wright Google it and show him the 110-page document of the design guidelines from, you know, Henry Lenny. So it happens.
I think it's such a wonderful tool to have some people that are actually on the Planning Commission, for those that need it, to really sit down, peer to peer, for 45 minutes, 30 minutes, an hour, and really go over everything. I think, I mean, I want to go there, you know? Yeah, the 10 minutes, and then we all hammer it out. And then they have to go back, and it's a blur to them at that point because we just destroy their 10 minutes.
A lot of it is mundane, you know? We got a lot of cell phone tower enclosures, and, you know, we got a lot of stuff that's adjacent to historical properties, or we get a lot of the Mills Act. And a lot of it's just very...
It's being a cultural heritage and...
Yeah, it function as both. But we'll discuss that when you come back. I thought, you know, we're moving in the right direction. We're still intact, and that's what counts, and, yeah. That's all I had from last night, and all I had in general. Did you have anything, Jonathan, too?
Yeah, I would just add to the Council's agenda items last night. There was a motion to apply term limits to commissions and committees, but it does not apply to the Planning Commission. So just clarifying that, if you had any questions on that. And then finally, just a general overview of things upcoming. We do have our first meeting of July canceled for the Planning Commission. Both meetings for the City Council will be canceled in July. We will have some upcoming study sessions for you. I'm not sure if those made it into the printed version of the TFA, but in June, we're going to do a study session for an update on the LCP. So that's the Geotechnical and Parking Study Components. So we'll bring an update on that. And then in July, we're going to have a study session on the gateway overlay zoning initiation that Council would like us to kick off. We will have also several other state-mandated, long-range planning topics that have to be addressed by the end of the year. So not imminent, but we will be producing a number of code changes for you to all to review by the end of 2025.
Sounds like we'll have our work cut out for us. Okay. So we are meeting, this is May, we'll have at least, June 4th is our next meeting, Jonathan?
Correct.
Brent, do you think you're going to make that meeting? Okay. Okay, your term is up, is that right?
I'm not sure when that is.
I think it's up this, this, this June.
It is June, but I don't...
Yeah, so it'll be that last meeting, whatever the last meeting in June for us would, because you're not reapplying. Is that correct? Okay. So for anyone that is tracking Planning Commission, there is going to be a seat that...
Or two.
That...
Or three.
Don't scare me. It's not April Fools. So, yeah, we encourage people to apply for that opening. Okay. Good. So, motions to adjourn? I'll go ahead and, yeah, okay. I'll go ahead and move that we adjourn to the next... next regular meeting of the Planning Commission. That is scheduled for Wednesday, June 4th, 2025, at 6:00 PM, held at the San Clemente City Hall Council Chambers. Uh, anyone?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner McCann. All in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Good night.